So we'll also give you some links and things like that so that you can, you know, read more on your own and that kind of thing, which is always good, help understand more. So, so then move to Scott first to go over some of the economic development things and...
Yeah.
We're gonna talk about some development stuff.
Yeah?
No. I know you're not excited about that, so what we're gonna say-
Any questions?
No.
Don't hesitate to ask.
I'm only gonna take three minutes. I'm just sorry. So one of the things when you're asking to do is just make sure that everybody's aware that we do have master plans that we as staff kind of act on. So we wanted to familiarize, familiarize you with those real quick. So if you go to departments on the homepage, we'll have fair and accurate ban for a bit. You go down to planning and zoning, and then to planning efforts. Here you can see all the major plans that we currently have and are currently working on. And so, anyway, I would encourage you to kind of go there. I know that some of you that sit on the parks committee are familiar with how we pulled that up and kind of liked. And so, we just want to make sure that you know where those are at, that you can go in and read those and kind of understand.
There's a link if you click on it?
It does, it'll link. So if you go to City Center Vision 2050.
Scott?
Yes.
Take her to one of the pages that explains. Here's the, here's the goals that we wanna do.
Yeah.
So they understand what we're looking at.
Yeah, so under that last page, we do have a little description of each one. So I'll give you a little bit of the highlight that Alan's talking about, but then you can also go, yeah, so under each one, there's a little bit there. But again, if you go to the City Center Vision 2050, we do have an executive summary as well as all of the goals broken out. And so, it gets very detailed in this one, and it even gets down into steps that we should take. So, I don't know if there's any more than you want to talk about.
The nice thing about it is when you listen to this, the 2050 vision, comprehensive plan and vision, every one of them has those. Here's where we're at, here's what we would like to see, and then they break it out into those goals, what we need to accomplish, and what timeframe we're looking at. Is this short-term, long-term, or continual? And so you can look at those, and it's something that we as staff try to go in as often as we can. We go, are we going where we want to? And these are all things that have been passed off or voted on by you of the kind of guideline you see.
So, each of these plans were produced or developed at a certain time. Is it, is it something that is being updated on a regular basis, or looking at them regularly and updating these plans? For example, a city center vision plan, I'm assuming we spent some money to develop that plan. Had a planner or somebody that... Once they leave, then, you know...
So this was actually all an internal link. It was heavily involved with council and everybody that was there at that time. Usually five to 10 years is the plan that's when we want to say, okay, we need to go and update this. This is on its fifth year, right? So it could be a time where we say, hey, we wanna relook at this, we wanna look at some of those things. And that's where we would encourage you to be familiar with it, right? There may be some things that you as council want to look at specifically in some of these plans. So, the envision, one of the largest planning effort we've ever done, over 2,000 people that participated in the county. A lot of where we went, that we, a lot of what we currently have came from envision. And so our Parks and Trails plan, heavily based on the feedback we got from citizens during envision. Anyway, so that's kind of the base that we've used to create the majority of these other plans.
Something I would throw in on that too is, because, you know, sometimes you, you make a plan like this, and then it just, you know, we used to say it sits on the shelf. Now it sits in a file on the computer, but, but, but as staff, we do look at these all the time, you know, when we're making our plans of things to do, when we're talking about things that we want to accomplish, we, we refer back to these all the time. So, so they are, you know, living documents, and then sometimes we look at them and go, well, that kind of doesn't really make sense with what we need, and we realize that, you know, not all planning efforts are perfect. And so sometimes, well, those are some of the things that we bring to you as far as like zoning changes and things like that, that, that we feel like maybe doesn't fit as well as it did back when, when the plan was made originally. So, so they are, they are updated very regularly.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think for them to be the most effective, they need to be revisited, like every five years, I've been updated, because I've been on the council, you know, mics a little bit longer than me, and the only one of those that I participated in was the comprehensive plan. So that means, you know, I'm five years, and that means that we haven't revisited any of those. And so if you're taking your orders from them, I would think you'd need to be like asking the council pretty regularly, you know, every couple of years, so if there's anything that needs to be...
Yep, absolutely. And I think this is kind of why we're happy with this, is to be in that process. So we want you guys to be familiar with them as well. So we realize that we have new council members that we don't always talk about this, we assume you know, right? Terrible for us. So we wanted to make sure that you're familiar with them, and that you can go out and read them.
Wasn't the envision Madison, wasn't that the one, the most recent one that was done just a couple of years ago?
No, that's actually the one, it's comprehensive plan is the one that we just...
Oh, that's the one, that's right. Twenty twenty-three, period.
So that's, yeah. Again, the envision one is this great base, because again, it, it really involved the most people we've ever had, even in any planning effort. So it gave us a lot of good feedback, that's why that one's still relevant, and will probably continue to be relevant. But why...
Yeah, and as you read through it, I don't know that a lot of the stuff has changed. I mean, you know, you read through it and, and, you know, the things that people wanted, or trails, or park, I mean, I think that's kind of the same thing that people want now. So I would, I would encourage you to read through it, and if there's parts of it that you think, well, that seems kind of outdated, then, you know, bring that up to us, and we'll take a look at it. If there's things that need to be updated, then, yeah, that's good.
So putting the, the new committee for Parks and Trails as an example, is to relook at these, and start to say, okay, hey, what, what needs to stay the same, what's different, what we need to do. So again, I'm just asking you to go in and familiarize yourself with them, and that'll get you to know them. Please ask questions anytime as staff. If you have questions about anything that's in those...
So we also have a drinking water system plan and two wastewater plans. We don't post those everyone to find in the public, but those are also available.
Yeah, they, obviously they have information on that, so we don't want to spread out there, right? But our whole system, but those are definitely things, you're not sure that, yeah, that we want. If you guys have interest in it, we'd love that to come and show you. Here's kind of our master plan. So here's what we grow out and do in that area.
And those traditional ones on the side that we will point out, development code, as well as the form-based code for downtown, those are additional ones. We'll kind of go through, and we know there'll be lots of questions, that's okay. That's also why we're here, is that you ask us those. So with that, I'll turn it over, just keep going, we want to talk about snow, so...
Do you, well, do you guys have any questions before I jump out and start talking about snow? Okay. Let's talk about a little stuff, a little white flakes that come down, that you guys will get phone calls on as well. I mean, the biggest thing you want to make sure is, is kind of just a refresher on what our policy is and how we go about that. So that way you guys know when you get those phone calls, you can say, yeah, here's, here's our policy, and here's how we go through that.
That's a question that I was wondering. Because last year, when we said we were gonna do this, we said that we're gonna get input and decided we wanted to update any of our policies. So are we gonna be doing that type too, or are you just giving us...
Yeah, no, no, I, I want to go through it, right? This is a great question. Want to go through it, and then if you guys have input, then we want to have further discussion on it, absolutely. So, yeah, so that, yeah, it's not just me telling you this is what it is.
I was about to tell you.
Yeah, yeah, oh yeah, no, absolutely. Okay, so, so when we look at, to give you kind of, wow, that's not showing up very good, is it? So we kind of, a look back, so you guys kind of understand how and when we plowed the entire city over time. So that's what, each of these graph points represents a year, a different year of when we plowed, right? And you look at these, and you can see, it's kind of, if you, over time, it's kind of shifted a little bit more as we've plowed more in March than we have in November, if you look at those, those years, right? So as we start seeing things shift and slide, but you can look, the different years, this is the total number of times we've plowed the entire city. And so that kind of gives you an idea of when we're plowing. And some of our frustrations when we plow is when we have cars parked down the street, right? But we've, we settled on December fifteenth to March first as no overnight parking on city streets. But you can see, in December, we do plow, and oftentimes we have to plow around those cars, we take burr around the cars and then come back and clean them out later if cars move, sometimes they haven't, especially if you get to those in the summer. So let's go next slide, so that lets you know that's when we have a two-inch accumulation order.
So the numbers like each of those bars, does that represent the...
The number of times that pond we plowed.
That in a month.
That year. Yeah, okay.
So it's not, it's not a new plow, five days in a row?
No, no, so yeah, so if you look at that, 2022 to 2023, we plowed five times in December, the entire city.
Got you.
So, yeah, that's a good question. Okay, the next one. So one of the things I want you guys to be aware of is temperature plays a huge part about it in snow removal. And quite often, we get compared to other cities, and they say, well, this town does it far better than Rexburg plows, right? So what I want you to see is, it's hard for you guys to read this, I'm sure, but this bottom red line is Rexburg, that's 32 degrees, this is the average high temperature that we're looking at. Anytime our highs are not getting above 32 degrees, that snow is not bearing off like a lot of other cities. And a lot of the cities we get compared to, I mean, even look at Idaho Falls in Tennessee, that range, right? As we look December all the way to February, how big a range we have that our highs aren't typically getting above 32. And then as you look at all these other cities like Pocatello, Logan, Salt Lake, you know, they're all sitting up high, I mean, Logan's a little bit closer, but it's even a little better than that, though falls. Anytime you're getting above 32 degrees, it bears off roads a lot better than when we're sitting up. So that is one of the things we deal with. So when you hear complaints about, oh, this town does it so much better, understand that there's probably Mother Nature is helping their mountain a lot better than us. So anyways, that's how I kind of wanted you to understand that, because I get that question a ton, but especially with all the new people coming in here, they're saying, oh, this town does it so much better, where I was like, oh, what are they doing? We find out as well, it's really Mother Nature is helping their mountain a lot better. Next. Okay, so our policies, right?
No...
No overnight parking on city streets from 2:00 AM to 7:00 AM, December fifteenth to March first, so that's basically everything. But our policy and procedure for snow removal, right? So, so we're always looking to monitor the storms, but there's, there's cutoff times. Obviously, Mother Nature doesn't drop the snow when we want it at the perfect timing, like it would be best if it happened during the day, two inches, we could let everybody know, our crews go out that night and plow. But that doesn't always happen. So we have a couple timeframes where we have a kind of cutoffs for us. So 10 o'clock at night, if we're gonna plow the entire town, we need to have that in place by 10 o'clock, or else we can't plow the entire town. And get it done in a timely manner where we're not competing with traffic when we're plowing. And then the other time that we look at is 4:00 AM. So if we have a storm event happen between 10 and 4:00 AM, what we'll do is we'll go out, plow the main roads, because we can get those by 4:00 AM before traffic really gets in there. And then that following night will come back in and then plow the entire city.
The dates, December fifteenth to March first, was that, was that, the thought to be December fifteenth, was that because the students leave about that time?
Yep.
So, or that wouldn't...
It used to be November first. And we don't, I mean, obviously from the graph, we don't get a lot of storms in November, until they were just like, well, we want to go to December fifteenth. I can't remember when they did that, it's probably like 2005 or '06, somewhere there were...
Yeah, it was before, I was on...
Yeah.
Changed to December fifteenth.
And then even, even then, we kind of use, with all the parents coming into town, we kind of use, we're never that graduated. So December fifteenth, we say, but we kind of give up, right? So anyways, and then, so the other things, depending on temperature is where it comes, we, we spread the salt, the brine solution out on the roads. So we're kind of watching that, if it's wet, we won't put it down because it just runs off, doesn't, doesn't work.
How effective is that?
It's, it's been pretty effective to get our streets to, to bear off better now, as we've seen it over the years. It lowers that, that melting, or that freezing temperature, and so that way it can melt. And a lot of times it can, it can keep it a little slushier, so when we're plowing, we can actually get it off before it freezes hard. Now, a lot of times, when storms roll in, unfortunately, it's generally a warm front, we get the storm, it's wet, heavy, and then we have a cold front that comes right behind it, and then freezes again. And that's what we see quite a bit in our weather cycles here, which makes it challenging. I agree with you there.
Once you put that brine, yeah, how long is it good for?
Uh, it's good for, depending on what we get, but definitely several days, right? So we can put it well ahead of us.
Depending on if it stays in place, right?
Yeah, if it gets wet and then it's like rainy, it, it runs off. So it's not good.
But if you put it down and the storm doesn't come for a couple of days?
Yeah, we're still, a lot of times we're doing it a couple of days in advance. So, yeah. So, thanks. So anyway, so kind of back to that, so 10 and 4 are kind of our, our timeframes. Now, with the 10 o'clock one, we actually won't be picking up all the snow, because the problem we run into is by 10 o'clock, if I don't have my contractors, because we don't have enough crews and equipment to pick up all the snow. So we're hiring that out. And so, if it's close to that 10 o'clock, we might plow everything, but then we might have to come back in the next night and pick it up when we can get our contractors in with their, their trucks to load that snow.
And you got the big burr down the middle main street, right?
No, we pull, we always plow to the edges now. We used to plow to the pole. But now we're, we're going to the edges, so we'll just plow to the edges, and then we peel and cut the curb back down, and then we pick that up. And so that's, that's kind of how we, we do it. So kind of the 6:00 PM is kind of our cutoff for the contractors to get them on board. So if that snow doesn't fall, if it falls between 6:00 and 10, we'll plow everything, but we'll have to come back in and pick it up.
So is your $25,000 burr in?
Yeah.
With the contractor?
Yeah, and it's probably higher than that. We'd look, that was probably, I know that number, but, yeah. And then on the, the salt and sand at, at the intersection, so when it's slippery, we rely on the police, and so generally they're out and about, and then they'll dispatch, we'll call us in, and then our crews will go out and sand. Generally, they'll say, hey, this intersection is slick, but our crews will go in. All the intersections that we know typically are, are slick. So we're not just coming in and hitting that intersection, we'll do a bigger area, we'll come in and sand it.
One thing I would say too, and the, and the police do a pretty good job, they try to kind of make the rounds and call in trouble spots, but, and, and the guys kind of know which spots are trouble spots generally, but if you come upon a spot that's, it's just slicker than heck, and everybody's sliding all over, just call Keith and, and report it to him, and then we'll try to get somebody out there and sand it as soon as we can.
Yeah, and that's straight long roads, we don't sand those. You don't have, you don't stand, so stand everywhere. If it's a curve and has to be those are the ones we'll do. Straight long roads, it, it could be really slick, but we don't, if we were to put sand down on every road, we would run out and low pass all the sand we have and hurt.
So who makes the call?
On the what?
On when the crews go out.
So Bill is our street foreman, Bill, makes the call and says, based on the snow, and so in the past, he's been, you go out and measure different locations. What I'm looking at now is, is, I don't know if you're familiar with Targi, the ski resort, they have what they call a sticked tree. And so it's a ladder stick, so I'm looking at Bill, five locations to put the stick in. Do we have that map? So we can, so we can look at it on cameras and see it, and so that way, we can look instead of having him come in and measure it and look and say, okay, we've got, now this is something new that we're trying out, so it's an experiment. So we want to look at different places a little. So at Targi, right, you can see the stick, and then there is a slider, so you can look back in time, so you can see when the snow fell, how much snow fell, out with that camera. So that's what I'm kind of looking at, I'm looking at the five different locations. So one would be up at the water tower, because I want to get something up on the hill so I know what's happening, because storms don't jump evenly across Rexburg. So I'll have one there, and then I'm looking out at Burton, or well out of Burton. And so we put them there, because I want to put it in the fenced-in area, so I don't have people messing with it.
Build an extra storm.
Yes. Let's get this plowed, so, right? So I got the, our water tower, we got Burton. I was thinking here at City Hall, but I couldn't think of a good spot, it's at the roof, but I'm like, we're gonna have to climb up to try and wipe it off. So we're looking at the Parks Department there, where we got that fenced-in area, looking at a spot maybe over by the golf course, and then the other one would be our north well, up on the south. And so what I'd look at is, obviously Bill would have access to the camera, and I'd give access to the council notes, right? So you guys can look at it, because we'll help and see. And so it's just something that I'm like, okay, we're putting that together right now, I've got one kind of mocked up, we'll see how it, how it goes.
So we can just kind of average those together, or if one of those hits two inches, we're going?
Well, that's a good, that's a good question, and I'm not sure what the right answer is on that. My thoughts would be is probably we'll start looking at them, and then kind of maybe see how it plays out, and then try and adjust from that, right? Not have necessarily a hard best rule right now, but look at it and say, well, what, what makes sense? And then, obviously, as the council have a conversation as we move along with that, say, okay, what, what, what tweaks maybe we need to do on that? So that way we can kind of get it down, then hopefully make it easier, right? Because the, I'll tell you what, the most difficult part that Bill tells me about his job is just making the call to say, when are we coming in, who's coming in, what are we doing? And then getting all the complaints, why did we do this, why did we do that, right? And so that's, that's a very challenging part of the job. So I'm trying to look for ways to make it easier and not, especially right before, did I, well, I might up all night, like check on the snow, you know, you know? So this is hopefully, kind of help make that easier, but yeah.
And then, okay, so I feel like, from the time I got on the council, this is when I get prompted to run anything else, when it snows and I go to like, I just need to run away because I know everyone's gonna come.
Yeah.
Yeah, just sign.
Yes. Oh, I totally understand, right?
Yeah, so I mean...
You need to go with a sign.
I will not talk about snow.
And, and I'm even gonna be honest, but like, it really doesn't bother me personally that much. I like to be forward, have to adjust here, we've lived here for 15 years. But I still get the same complaints, and I feel like one of the things I get asked the most is why we wait for the two inches? Because sometimes it's like, what points are the five inches? And then it sits there and freezes, and so that's what I get asked a lot, and I get asked, like I was having a conversation with Brad, that he was talking about how we only plow at night, at the coldest time of the day, so we get less off, and if we plow when it was warm, warmer, you know? So, so there's all these things, but I feel like in order to change any of it, we would have to have, you know, an appetite to like, try new things, like we plow more often, and that would cost more money. So, I mean, is that ever gonna be an option? Like, is anyone interested in trying? Like, maybe we change that, that we plow when there's one inch, two inches, and then you compare the two years and see if we found a kid, help the residents.
Yeah, no, I, I, I mean, I, I think that's open for discussion.
Yes.
Absolutely, and I think that's, that's part of it, is to say, well, right, because I mean, everything has a cost, right? And, right, and I always say this, right? Whatever I spend on snow removal is less money than I have to spend on road maintenance, right? But, right, just, I, I want to throw the caveat out with it, is, is we just have to say, well, what's it worth, right? Is it worth having plowing every, as an annual to say, right?
Right, and as a council, I don't think we've blown through even the part that we had allocated. We have the, you know, like, at least the last couple of years, like, we, right? We haven't, we haven't used a whole one that we have allocated for the plowing. We had some kind of land years.
Yeah, and it's not really, I mean, we, we call it allocated, but I, I think it's really the street budget, we just say, where, where am I spending?
Well, I know, but I mean, like, if we go in budget, meaning Matt tells us how much is allocated for plowing.
Well, yeah, and he just bases it off on averages of what we've done in the past.
Well, we've been going under that.
Yeah, yeah.
Sometimes I have.
Yeah, so, and, and so, yeah, it is a, a good conversation to say, you know, why do we want to look at, how often is that plowing? Well, now, plowing during the day, or...
Oh, sorry, I was just gonna say, I was just kind of trying to think through that, because, yeah, you know, maybe we say an inch and a half, or, or one inch or something, you know, just to try to kind of, try something a little bit different. But I guess the one thing that I was just thinking is, if we plow more often, are we gonna get more complaints or less complaints? Because that means it's gonna be plowed into their driveways more often. So, you know, that's the biggest complaint I get, is the snow plowing the drive. Of course, it might not be as big of a thing if we plow a little more often, so there might be a trade out there too, so I don't know.
Yeah, and one of the things that I'm looking at this year, and I want to get the councils weigh in on it, in areas our, our graders, right, because we have five areas that we have creators go out and plow, and we have some other ones that help out different areas. But one of the things that we get in the springtime, right, is our graders, especially where the sidewalk is against the curb gutter, right? There's a lot of times our graders over the years have kind of shied away and hounded instead of pushing it onto the sidewalk. But at, at some point, if I get enough snow, either I've gotta push that pile over, and then it inundates their sidewalk, and I move it, right? Because the road's getting narrow enough and concerning that, that I've gotta move that pile. And so one of the things I wanted to get your guys to get put on is, I've been talking about is, what if we just plowed to the gutters? Because the benefit of getting to the gutters in the springtime is when that snow melts and my gutters are exposed, then I have those catch basins that the water can run to and get into versus these big ponds, right? Where when I'm plowing outside the gutter and that snow hasn't melted away yet, right? And then you get in people's driveways, which happens all the time, right? The water melts, then you get it freeze, then it breaks, and then get in and out of the driveways, it's kind of rough, ice pond area. And so cutting to the curb would be advantageous to hopefully not have that issue as much, because then my gutters are more exposed. But if I cut to the curb every time, then that's snow if those sidewalks are against the curb again, right? That I'm gonna push on there every time.
See, I have that problem. I have to blow point, and the rain is probably three houses yet, so I'm every letter, I'm bringing the gutter all the way down to that rain, otherwise I have a bomb that goes through the driveway.
Yep.
I, I prefer to stay at the curb, because you're gonna have to move the snow anyway, whether it's in the gutter or it's on the sidewalk, and it's easier on the sidewalk. That's just why.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that. Because that's kind of the, the conversation, like, should I have my radar operators?
But do you think that's gonna be harder on the curbs though, if the snow plows, if they're, they're...
Well, I mean, we're gonna be tight, so there could, there could be some, you know, I mean, obviously there's areas where we fit curbs, right? But if we kind of know if we're plowing, it's when, when it goes over, my operator doesn't know exactly where the location is. That's, that's what we tend to, when you've done it over and over, and you start having it kind of bear off, then it's, it's not as bad.
So, back to the two-inch deal, is there any way to go back historically to find out how many, how many one-inch snow plows we had, and how, how that would have increased our, how many more times we would have plowed them? Somebody's gotta have that data.
If that data was, I'm not sure how back, how far back they... If that data was, I'm not sure how back, how far back they go with the data.
We could all assume, although it's like...
Yeah. I just don't know if they'd go back a year, a month.
If we went back two years.
Track it this year, just track it this year and see what, and then you can look at it at the end of the year. Can you go back to that cost to chart and show the days plowed?
Oh, yeah.
If you plowed to the, like you were talking about, is that I'm gonna put more, or in the driveway? Like, would it like that?
The same in the driveway, but to put more on the sidewalk.
It's gonna put the same as we plow, but then they're gonna have to clean it off the sidewalk.
Well, I just know my house is on the corner with the sidewalk right next to the street.
Yeah, I'm on the corner.
Keith pays people to burn, so.
I just think if that berm is even bigger.
Well, if they're moving it back, right? So if we're plowing, say we've got three inches of snow in the ground, we plow it, then they're gonna have to move it off the sidewalk and then move it into their, their yard. And then, and then we just have that. The one thing that, on driveways that really cause a lot of grief for property owners, right? Is when those berms get high enough, that when my grader ring is coming through, right? That berm is holding the snow there and tatters and helping once it's in the driveway. And then also they just releases it all in. And that's why we see those, where people are like, hey, jump four feet in my...
So maybe if we graded to the curb, it would dump less on the driveway, do you think?
Well, I think as that snow gets moved off, right, we're gonna, we're gonna spread it over that bigger area, right? Because as long as they don't have a big berm there that's holding my snow back from, from moving. We might still see it though, right, in those areas that have that seven-foot landscape, right? Because we'll bury that, and then that will build up, because no one's gonna move that out, because they're just gonna do their sidewalk. So we might still see it in those, those areas, which we might be like, yeah.
Well, we live in an area where we don't have a, we don't have a gutter.
That's true.
So that's always iffy, if they're, everywhere else they're going to the gutters, I worry they're gonna peel off my sod, take a few sprinkles with it.
A lot of people put, um...
And I do, I put the orange ones off, but I, I lose a couple of those every year.
Yeah. No, and that, and you're, right, those areas that obviously have a wider area, because, right, and those are where we have, we have the curb, right? Without that, and then those areas are wider, but then we can move it.
Personally, if your sod is sticking up too high, it's good to cut it off every once in a while and just rebuild.
Yeah.
Okay, but I have another question too, because in my, I live in Silver Hill, and in our own neighborhood, this didn't happen, but, and, and I, I get a lot of calls about this, and it's happened to me personally, so. And like, even my husband would wait to see if they came to plow. If he had to leave, they had to come, and as soon as he leaves, they come to plow, like at eight, eight-thirty in the morning. I, I literally cannot get it out, like, so, like, I, so I have to drive over the berm. But so I get calls about how it's coming through, right? Whenever one needs to leave for their jobs and things like that. So, I mean, I don't know, like...
I get that sometimes too.
Yeah, and it's just, it is really hard. Like, if you need to leave and they come through, and all of a sudden you've got a half hour to dig yourself out, but you don't have a half hour, then, I mean, it's a burden for people, so.
Yeah. Oh, I, oh, yeah, because, I mean, when we're plowing the entire city, it's, some areas are gonna be major, right? Right, yeah. I mean, we're gonna plow, right, we're gonna start with the main roads, work those out, and then they're gonna, the graders are gonna work it out, right? And so there's gonna be people that unfortunately are in that window as we try and plow the entire town.
I mean, they're, they're not just sitting around the corner waiting for your husband to leave and...
Well...
Aren't there like rush hours that you don't plow at all, because there's just too much traffic?
Yeah, that's why we don't plow during the day.
Okay, so what's the cutoff in the morning? When do you guys say, we're done plowing in the morning, let's let the people just drive?
Well, generally, when we get out to those neighborhoods, right? So that's why we start with the main roads, right? If you get those done before we get traffic. And then, and then depending on how it snow and how quickly we're moving along, determines when they hit those, those neighborhoods. But generally, as we get into those neighborhoods, right, the traffic isn't like, it's when we get a backup at intersections, like, anything downtown, or we have higher around campus, we have those higher volume of traffic. Those are the areas we try to get clear first, and then we move out to the neighborhoods, and that's why, right, we get to those neighborhoods. They might be eight, eight-thirty, because it, it will take us, you know, eight, ten, eleven hours to kind of have snow falls. And so, you know, and that's where, we're unique in the sense that we plow the entire town, right? There's, like Idaho Falls, they just say, we'll plow the main roads, and then we'll clear a snow emergency, and then we go in and then plow these neighborhoods, but the neighborhoods don't plow as often. And then they'll come in during the day and say, okay, I'll, ah, we're coming through, we're, we're plowing, and kind of cleaning it up.
What do they do if there's so much that you literally can't drive your car and follow the names of roads?
Until they can get there, they just say...
My, my kids in Boise, I mean, of course, they, for us, all that, two years ago, they went three weeks with eight inches of snow in their, on their road, which was very unusual for a year. And we went down that, I mean, it was massive, but, you know, that's just what they do.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it's just, I'm...
That's why, that's why I have followed the residential streets. If you, if you drive there, you know, and it's been a couple of weeks since it plowed, and, I mean, there's ruts, and it's just, you know, it's pretty bad. So, and, you know, we, we tried to plow every day on every storm so that we could clear it off. And, you know, what that means is you do get berms in your driveway a little more often, and it's a pain. I, I agree, it's a pain, because we have to shovel without do. But I don't, I just don't know, because, I mean, and just depending on how much snow there is, and what time they get started and everything, it just kind of depends on what time they'll be coming through a neighborhood, and so, you know, it's, it's just basically impossible to say, well, let's try and get it cleared off. Everybody has to leave for work, you know, it's just, it's just how the workload blows, you know? I, I don't know, it, it's tough, and I don't, we kind of racked our brains on how can we do it better? And what things can we do differently, and, you know, in order to keep ourselves, you know, spending, yeah, the scabbed money? You know, we've just, so far, this has been the best way we can come up with. You know, I don't know, if we want to try plowing more often, we, we certainly can, you know, knowing that it will cost us more money.
Yeah, we're talking about, he was like, you know, whatever, yeah, if we want to look at...
Regardless of snow level, it's gonna be over twenty-five grand a shot, right?
Yep.
And is there...
We deal with whole plow.
Is there a realistic, do you ever do a portion of town? I mean, is there ever a time where it's like, okay, in the south, they got hit, and there's three inches, but...
So there, there might be a time, right, because it's only up on the hill, right? They're gonna get heavier snowfall than they do down in the valley. So sometimes there might be a time, right? So there's always little nuances, right? So we might plow up there, or if it's blowing and drifting in certain areas, we'll send the plow out to try and open that up. And there's times when we just shut down the road, it's like, we can't keep it open, it's just coming too much. And there's times when we might get two and a half inches of snow, and I look at the weather temperatures, and it's gonna be forty degrees tonight today. And so we're not gonna go plow, we have who knows, it's gonna melt off. And there might be a time when we say, oh, we got an inch and a half snow, we know it's coming in, we wanna give it off. So we might jump a little earlier, you know, without the, the two inches. I mean, two inches is generally our overarching that we look at, is two inches in a storm event, or accumulation of two inches over time, right? That we're gonna come in and try and plow that off. But, but there are little nuances, because in the, in the springtime, if it's gonna get warm, the last thing you wanna do is plow, and then stack up the snow when we think it's gonna melt anyways, and then we don't have those piles of snow that take longer to melt off. But there might be a time when the snow comes in wet and heavy, and you don't have the two inches, and you're like, no, let's, we wanna try and get that off. So, so, yeah, so there is, there is a, a little bit, right, that we, we kind of just do a judgment call on. But overarching, it's been two inches. For longer than I've been working here, but, you know, once again, right, as we grow and expand, and there's changes, and you get people that feel like, well, no, I want, I want a lot less snow, or... And so that's, that's where, you know, have, have you guys weigh in and say, here's, here's what I'd like to do? Right, and then you guys set the policy, and then we try and get them out of the question.
Personally, I'm okay with the two-inch standard. To Brian's point, I suppose if you want to look at the lesson of the accumulation, you could go with, I meant this December, January, we're gonna plow an inch and a half, because those are your head months. But if November, February, March, we're gonna wait for the two-inch.
Oh, so do you have a...
Look at the standard.
Yeah. Yeah.
The other thing was, yeah, because you're gonna get temperature shifts more likely.
And that's when the ice, you know, it's never dead, it's not ice, it's just...
Yeah.
I was curious, Keith, when you look at the operators, and less than they've had a tough job. When they, for example, plow streets around parks, or they're open fields, they try to plow at an angle to where it's all plowed to the park side, so they avoid the...
We don't, we tell them just plow straight up, so we're not, because we wanna be as efficient and get it done as quickly as we can. And so I have lots of places that people are like, hey, can you just plow this differently from my section? And then all of a sudden, it gets into a problem. Now, if you, if you want us to do that, and we can look at those areas, but then it's, the problem is, is that, is what I face is, people say, well, you're doing it for them, can you pile this, this way for me? Can you, can you do my cul-de-sac differently? So we, we do all the cul-de-sacs the same, so everybody's just, we're doing it the same, it's our most efficient pattern. But there are people that are like, hey, can you just move it over this zone? Prime example would be Him Valley Park, right? Because the park was cul-de-sac going in, and they would love for me to just push everything into the, into the park. But it's, it's one of those things like, well, then I have people up at Downers Square, right? There's that park, and they say, well, can't you just plow all of those all middle there? And so I give that all over, and so it's like one of those things like, well, how do I try and mitigate that? Some people aren't like, well, you do this for us here, and do this over here differently. And then I have different operators that come in. Generally, we have the same person doing the same area, so we can have some consistency with that. But that's, that's the problem we face, right? Is, is people saying, well, do this over here differently, and then all of a sudden my efficiencies go way down, and maybe I've taken even longer to plow the road when we're trying to be as quickly as, do as quickly as possible to get this in the water.
I mean, the creator would have to go up close to track, or the opposite way, right?
And then I'm just kind of winging it over and over, and as it gets bigger and bigger, I have to take smaller swipes out. So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's a great idea, and you're like, I don't know, how can we help our customers, right, our citizens? But it's, but it's, when you look at this big picture as a whole, that's, that's what we'd rather do. You just put it all on the other side of the road. Yeah.
It's always the other side of the road.
And I think that'd be great.
Neighbors on the other side are bigger snow blowers.
Exactly. I find that so...
But I, I would like to say that anytime I have called, they have been very helpful. Like, I don't know if you even remember, I contacted you, I think it was two...
When we had the big boulders?
Yes, and we would, and wait them, and they were like, oh, fifty yards.
No, and there's, there's gonna be times, right? I mean, obviously, we had a lot of people like, it's a miracle, like, no one likes this, this driveway in the day, especially when it's like wet, heavy, and it rolls up in a big boulder. I mean, if there are situations, we'll try if we can. I mean, obviously, my crews are, they can't have them working around the clock, twenty-four hours a day. They have to go home and get the slip too. But there's times when we have kind of strange events.
It's scraped off the edge, it's put these hundred-pound boulders in there.
Boulders in there, and then we try and help them out, yeah. I mean, there's times when we're gonna come, but it might not be right away we'd get there. But, but there's situations that we're gonna try to do what we can. I mean, obviously, there's a bunch of, there was a big push, and that's not how we do it on the council, when we look at snow gates. Because people are like, oh, just do these snow gates, right? But then you look at, okay, if I'm still plowing the entire town, I need to probably three times the amount of graders I have, I have to get snow grades, all these other graders we're looking at millions of dollars. Or you start saying, oh, we'll just plow these areas, and then what neighborhood do you want to stay? Well, you're gonna be three days before we get to your neighborhood, right? And so it's like, all of a sudden, you're like, okay, I don't know. And so snow gates didn't really work, and what, from what I hear, a lot of communities, unless you've got a lot of distance in between, like counties probably works fine, because you got a driveway. So you got a short distance, and then you're coming down. When you have lots of driveways, trying to up and down, and then if there's too much snow, it actually goes over the top of the snow gate, and there's still even a little berm left, so there's lots of issues. We do have, we did purchase one snow gate. The reason why I did purchase a snow gate is because in the springtime, when I'm going out to cut ice, right, to build certain areas, generally I have the grader cut through and then have a backup, trying to go along and push that slush pile out of driveways, because we're cutting them out in the daytime. And so I thought, well, let's try a snow gate, and see if we can cut and just keep that slush and not put a backhoe. Because some of my concerns, right, when I'm running a backhoe and it's on the driveway, if there's broken concrete, and there's damage to it, they're gonna come back and say, hey, you guys damaged my concrete, we need to, need to come back with this stuff. And so those are some other, right, other concerns that we think about of like, how do we make sure we're not doing something that would have gone financial horrible?
Well, and I, I agree. I think that, I think the two-inch thing is, is reasonable. I, I know that there's always gonna be complaints. There's always gonna be somebody that moved from Arizona to Idaho and can't figure out this snow thing. But, but I think you guys do a great job of, it's just, I think if, if, if the citizens would see this presentation, they'd get a better idea of what goes into what, you know, what, what we're doing for them, and, but, yeah, that's... So I don't know.
Unfortunately, it would be nice. I can really feel real, it melts off.
Fortunately, that's not our thing. But I would be interested to see if there's any way we can figure out how many more times we would have to plow if we determined it was, if it was just a one inch.
A one inch. I mean, and maybe there's... Okay, one of my ideas is that the double, ah...
I like that idea. Maybe December, January, that one, you know, if we set that string, I really like Robert's idea. By that time where there's really not much of an option or an opportunity for Mother Nature to help us out, if we're not gonna get above freezing, maybe we drop it to an inch and a half and see what happens. See what's gonna, you know, see if the budget starts taking a clobbering, uh, see if it's more efficient, uh, you know, there's some things we could do there.
Right, that's what I would have known.
Yeah, I wonder if that might not be a bad, a thing to try. Because we could always stop in the middle of it if suddenly the budget's passed on, and we're assured through winter, and we're like, whoa, we got to be here for... But, so... Yeah?
That's what I think, if we can even tell them that we're trying something new.
Experimenting with something different.
And who knows? That seems reasonable, but that might actually be...
We could live in January or December, anyway, it probably does push a little bit more chance, like guys are gonna get on Christmas Day. Because like, we always said, December's a tough month, yeah, but, but now we move the snow.
We just pass the city ordinance, and everybody, nobody should expect to be plowed on Christmas Day.
But that's gonna be bad. I always feel bad about some of those, like, oh, especially, Christmas Day. We're not gonna plow.
What about the, how we do the curve line?
Yeah, what do you, what are your thoughts on that?
I, I like the idea, I don't know, areas where there's no curve, but I know just what they can do.
No, they, yeah, that one, that one I'm not, because everything's just gonna be, but, I'm not, we're not trying to get to it, right?
And that's not gonna cost anymore or slow anything down?
No, I mean, because there's still gonna be...
Yeah.
Making the same number of passes at the same speed.
Instead of holding it back and building that berm, because primarily it's, it's the areas that, right, we have sidewalk against the curb, right? That we're trying to, like, how do we try and balance this? But then at some point, you know, especially when you look at like, these older subdivisions, like three streets, some of those roads are already narrowed, as, as it is, and sidewalks right there. And so we start building that berm, and then at some point, we're like, okay, we gotta cut it back. And then we really, and it takes, so anytime I gotta cut a, cut a berm back, and I can't really, definitely have the big chunks, we have all, all the issues that come with that, so.
But is it, are they gonna notice the berm that they're, if you're doing that, because there's one more swipe?
No, it would, it's not really, so what probably looking at is, you know, where those berms hit is probably a four, maybe five inches, right? That, that we go over every time. So they, they're just gonna see, they were gonna, they're gonna go out, they're gonna shovel their sidewalk. So they, they're just gonna see, they were gonna, they're gonna go out, they're gonna shovel their sidewalk regardless, right? But we're gonna push that snow over, and so you'll have, you have, that's where they're gonna go over.
So instead of having a sidewalk and then...
And sometimes that gets up...
And where you drive, they're basically gonna be clearing off, right, uh, airspace on the...
I mean, I've talked to different people that like, you know, your best bet is to try and clear out your gut from different people coming in. And like, your best bet is clear that area out, blow it all in as much as you can when my graders go by it, that's what I do, that snow. But, but not everybody has a snow blower to do that. And so you're hand shoveling, and depending on how long your...
Every hand shoveling, it's a lot of work.
Yeah, so, so that's why it's like torn to see what, what options.
So I had somebody ask me the other day, whose responsibility are the new winter changes out here? First of all?
Um, generally, in the past, we plowed through, but, so they can't, before, they would just come down the off ramp and then go back up, right? You can no longer do that at these winter changes. So we've talked to them, and they haven't gotten back with us on plowing, how this is all gonna work.
We're, we're gonna take turns as the winter...
Um, so we've got a little bit tricky. Oh, yeah, it's definitely gonna be tricky to say, because, I mean, obviously, you've got the walls and you've got sidewalks, how we move that snow out there. So they're gonna have to come off those, they're gonna have to plow by the off ramp, the on ramps. And as they come off, I mean, they can't just go straight across and then back up. They're gonna have to come in, come back through, so... We've, we've had a, um, put up some conversation, but, um, I can't remind you. But that, that is a good question. That's gonna be one of our interesting figures to figure out. Okay.
So...
We wanna talk about that real quick. Yeah, so the takeaway is really quick, I just want to restart my, in basic. So we're looking at inch and a half, uh, December, January, right? So we use that, and then are we plowing to the curve or not? I see those, right?
I see those tread and see...
We're gonna get those complaints of the other direction, right?
And we can say...
We're gonna get plenty of it.
But we get lots of them.
Well, let's, let's have a, yeah, let's have another council discussion. So let's not just say, Keith, you need to stop that. What I wanna do is say, okay, let's, next council, let's have a conversation. Okay?
And it might not be, you know, I guess my only suggestion when we are looking at that window to plow at an inch and a half is look at the temperature data and slide that wherever, you know, rather than we just set arbitrarily, December first to January thirty-first, maybe it needs to be December fifteenth to February twelfth. Because that's when the freezing, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Wasn't your point that when we have very low chance of getting above freezing? Yeah, so we, so when it, when we do have a chance to get above freezing, we plow two inches. When it's pretty definitely gonna stay below freezing, let's try an inch and a half and see what happens.
Yeah, so I, I think we'll start though with, we'll go December because it's gonna be easier for my crew to just say, let's start December, and then we'll see how it goes. And then we can make adjustments. So, yeah, I think it would be good, you know, you can have a, definitely, let's have another conversation at the end of the snow year. But if we need to have a conversation in between, then let's just add... Okay, uh, let's go to our next, I don't know, what time we got? How much time we got, Tony?
Five minutes.
We have five minutes, we can cover this. So parking around Port Park, I was there last night, nine o'clock, checking it out. I mean, there was a few stalls, but at nine o'clock, you know, those are not people in the park, right? And so, so wanted to see what some ideas are. I mean, one would just be sign it, say no overnight parking, then at least cars have to go at night. But that, that might not help us during the day. Um, we do have, when we rent out the pavilions, it's a four-hour time slot that we rent out the pavilion. Um, you can look at two-hour times, but, you know, when people come and use the park and build a splash park or doing things, is two hours an appropriate amount of time at Port Park? Or we allow people to come to go? So I don't know, these are some of the options. You tell me what, what you want to do.
We allow people to do, uh, two-four hour blocks, so they can be there eight hours, basically, all day.
On it. So, so we have to figure out how, how do we, how do we adapt? Do we give them little anchors in their windows, right? I mean, that could be an option. I mean, so right now, we're just brainstorming options.
What's the issue during the day?
It's just, right now, we haven't ever had this, but it is full of, like, all the spots are taken in and, yeah.
Oh, we don't, you can't access the parks, it's all, a lot of it's college nature or whatever, they're apartment complex.
It's hard for me. Yeah, so I had Alan ran the numbers for me, because I wanted to say, well, how many, how many stalls do we have? And how many, um, people don't have stalls, right? So two-hundred-and-fifties?
They don't have...
Don't have parking, right? So that's how many, so we're at eighty-four percent. There's not a spot for a car. There's a stoop there, we look at, we've got eight, about eighty-four percent parking for the number of students that are in that area. We just, yeah, off script. So we just look at just, um, west, uh, second plaza, right? So we're just looking right around at a Port Park and saying, well, how many of these could be? I mean, because it really, Sundance has now come online, and we hadn't seen it. There's probably some, but we hadn't seen it to this extent that we're seeing this year. Um, and so a lot of people are like, well, is it Sundance? And then, you know, who's, who's part of it? Could it even be students that are like, oh, here's a three-place park, and I'm gonna walk up to campus and I'm just gonna go spend today, and then I'll come back. Because I can park it for free, I don't have to have to do it. Uh, so those are kind of all the things we've been thinking about. So I don't know.
And did you say until the third, what was happening at Port Park?
Well, so Aaron and I have been over there looking just for the Christmas lights, all those things. And we're actually seeing a lot of, we're seeing a lot of the same cars. So I think they're actually parked there, not just for the day. I either park long-term, long-term. Either that, or they're just like, it's closer to my front door than it is if I go parking in the back. Anyway, my, my personal take would be try to do overlap thing and see if that helps.
Well, that's gonna happen on December fifteenth.
Anyway.
But then they're still using it all day.
Yeah. Well, again, what we've seen is we can identify like over half the cars that were there the day before, the day before.
At least they have to move them in the evening, so they can have the same shot.
Make some tours and see.
Yeah, because it's not fair, because you know that several of the guys doing people to report that would say, no, it's not fair that he makes his, people get a permit and then people are working the system. This doesn't seem to work at all.
Well, I had some people that say, we should have low overnight parking.
You should do around four hours, or is that, what, what do you suggest?
Yes, well, I, I would be fine with the four hours, the three hours and those. I think those are an exception, the rentals, you know?
Hey, hey, affiliate, I mean, this...
How many people rent the, those pavilions for eight hours?
Yeah. I mean, and I think there's things you could do. I mean, you could give them anchors, whatever it takes.
Yeah, I think the four hours is reasonable.
That's kind of, I was thinking maybe we should try, since that's what the pavilion requires, four hours. Be a four-hour limit, and then we see how that works.
Do we have the ability to police that?
Uh, so eliminate, so if you did four hours, right, you might get, right, you or plow.
But somebody would come through, and I mean, when I was a kid, somebody came and parked, bought tires with a little chalk, and they came back four hours later and ticketed everybody who's chalk and moved.
They're a little more sophisticated now.
I would think.
But, but we have a completed license, like, they go through.
Oh, really, cool.
Um, and so, so they can pick, they can pick those cars up as they go through. Um, so, yeah, so it is a thing, um, that we could do. We, we just need to talk to them and say, okay, here's what we're... Now, we do have two-hour parking on the one side right now. So on the...
South side, where that's so easy by the splash park.
So there's, so we're gonna sign it, right? That's the other thing, right? Getting signed in and all that, too. Definitely, we're having a hard enough time just putting in, because, you know, south of Port Park on Third West, so in between Second South and Third South. So we, right, we adopted to change that to you along with Sundance. So that's gonna be you permit, and then our permit on the west side. So that, that way, those residents will get a couple of our permits that they can have their visitors hang in there, things, but hopefully they can control that a little bit.
You know, I drove by there today, and around the Sundance, things they've got, they've got some A-frames.
Yep, because we're having a hard time getting, getting in there to put our signs in.
Oh, so that's...
That's, that's us putting that out, saying, no parking in there still.
Okay.
Trying to get people out of there so we can go get our sign.
Okay.
That's, that's what I say.
I just had somebody ask me about that whole, why did they get, why did they get their parking slots? I think they're gonna change that.
Okay, well, I would, I would agree with four-hour parking. I think that would...
Is that what everybody wants us to do?
I think so. Would that include a no overnight parking as well? Because I don't...
I think that would be good.
I think so.
I think so. I mean, the purpose of that, the, yeah, the purpose of that parking is for people to use parks.
Now, I don't know how quickly I can get signs.
Okay, well, you know...
Well, I have to see, well, I have to see, right? And then, I mean, I have some signs, and then...
Yeah, yeah, because we're coming out of the summer time, and that's just gonna be...
Because, I mean, I, obviously, I've got temporary signs. Right, I don't dig those holes, and we can look and see what we got and see what we've got. Trying to change, you know? And we'll, we'll keep the south side the same, with that, everybody will do that.
That's all the news, yeah.
Already signed that way. But people park there anyway, because they know we're not waiting at night yet. Uh, but we do start portaging once we roll into our, um, no parking area.
The south side is...
Yeah, both, yeah, both looking out, looking out. All right, and we'll do it there. So anyways, we'll move these out. Thank you.
Awesome, really?
Thank you.
Hey, what about you? Shit. Have you done any hiking, baby?
I've been doing a couple of stays, originally.
Oh, awesome. Is there any snow or something everywhere?
There was some last, like, a week ago, a week ago. I didn't have any snow, I'm sure there was a little snow, no? Because I saw, you know, I live on all the webcams, I'm talking like Jackson has a little on the ground from yesterday's or the day before, so... And I think Table Rock has like put in a hat now, like, from the west.
A foot in it?
Yeah, I think so. Because Turkey, they're, um, at their, well, I'm just there, stick a tube up like fourteen inches yesterday or the day before. I mean, yeah, so it's melted, I think, and I made it look, I was like, it's cold. I think we do like Saturday, see?
Oh, my gosh.
How about you, did you do any, anything fun?
No, I know Amanda went to Delta Lake. She said, yeah, she said it was, it was hard, but it was not gonna hurt.
Is that her first time going to it?
A second.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, she wanted to do the Table Rock, but she just didn't get out there.
Oh, yeah.
Before the snow. I was in California, so I did a hike in California. It was pretty, yeah.
Rex? Hey, if we didn't know better, we'd think you're just a high school student.
Oh, yeah.
You're just so young looking.
It's a compliment, right?
I could make a note.
Oh, you're the same that way.
Yeah. Hopefully, yeah. Let's see, whose turn is it?
Well, there are assignments due tonight, so for the last time, we're gonna have a packed...
Oh, is that right?
Until next trimester, then.
Yeah, there you go.
You lead us in my pledge.
Pretty good group.
But he's not here, so...
It's because of their little suspect, other than that.
Yeah?
Collected, hired, or appointed. Matt Nielsen, finance, city clerk, Deborah Lovejoy.
Why don't we, uh, while we're waiting, uh, let's, let's go ahead and make some, some introductions. I, I'm assuming there's a government class assignment due tomorrow? Is that...
Tonight before eleven fifty-nine.
Oh, well, we better, we better get this show on the road then, so they can get that done, so... Well, we are happy to have you here with us tonight. Uh, glad that you're here to learn a little bit about how your local government works. And, uh, so we will go ahead and start this meeting. This is a Rexburg City Council meeting for November the sixth, twenty twenty-four. And, uh, we start our meeting with a prayer and a pledge to the flag. And it's, it's my turn to say the prayer, and after which, we'll ask council member Chambers to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, so... Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for the opportunity to meet here tonight in this city council meeting. We're grateful for the good citizens of Rexburg and all of the good things that they do. We ask thy blessings to be upon them and, uh, to help them be safe and to make good decisions and that we can continue to be a great family community. We ask thy blessings to be upon our city team members as they're working each day and doing the many things that they do, that they will be blessed with protection and, and good, uh, good decision-making and, uh, that we can continue to run the city smoothly and that things will go well and that they will be able to work without harm or incident. And we ask you to bless us this night, that we can make good decisions in the things that, that we are called upon to do, and that we can use wisdom and good judgment and call upon, uh, thy inspiration for the decisions that we make. These favors and blessings we ask in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, legal, and just for all.
All right, thank you very much, we appreciate that. All right, uh, just to let you know, uh, if you're, if you're looking at the agenda, we had a work meeting earlier, starting at five-thirty, where we talked about, uh, some of the city's master plans that we work from, and we reviewed our snow removal policies. As we know, we're gonna start getting some snow landing on the streets here pretty soon. And, uh, we know how much everybody loves shoveling those snowdrifts out of their driveways, but, uh, uh, sometimes that is just a reality of where we live. Um, and so, uh, for this meeting, we'll go ahead and get started with our, uh, roll call of our council members. We'll ask Mariana Gonzalez over here, our Assistant Deputy Clerk, to, to do that for us.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember E. Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember E., sir.
Here.
Okay, thank you. And council member Colin Erickson and council president Mike Walker have asked to be excused tonight. They're out of town, so, thank you, Mariana. I actually said that wrong, you're not the Assistant Deputy Clerk, you're the Deputy Clerk, right? Okay, there we go. All right, and does a fine job, I might add. All right, uh, the very first... All right, uh, the very first thing that we have on the agenda tonight is a presentation about the Rexburg Free Clinic for the Career Fair, and, uh, Mr. Johnny Carroll, would you go ahead and come up and, uh, give us your presentation? That would be great.
Thank you, Mayor Merrill, and thank you, councilmembers, for allowing us to be here tonight. Um, so my name is Johnny Carroll, I represent the Rexburg Free Clinic. Um, and basically, what we do, I'll give you a brief background, is we provide medical care for those who are not insured, um, and for those who desperately need services here in Rexburg. Um, we are open about two nights a week, from 6:00 to 9:00. Um, and we have providers that come in on their, on their own time. Uh, they do come in and provide those services, um, such as checkups, uh, we do physical therapy, um, things of that nature. Um, and one thing that we do, uh, this is our second time doing this this year, um, or this is the second time we've done this. Uh, last year, we did a care fair. Um, and basically, what we do there is we have people who provide free services come to the, um, gymnasium in the old high school, and, uh, they provide, uh, they kind of tell people what they do, what they offer. And if people need those services, they are then welcome to kind of see what they're about.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I do have a flyer about the Rexburg Free Clinic, um, that I will pass, if I may, pass it to you.
Yeah, sure.
And I also do have a flyer for the Fair Care, uh, which offers, gives you every bit of information you need to know about, um, the fair that we're doing this Saturday. Um, if I may bring it up to you.
Yeah, sure, that's fine. Mm-hmm. Okay, well, thank you, we appreciate that, and appreciate all of the work that the Free Clinic does for those who need those services in our community. So, thank you.
One thing I did want to offer, if I may, real fast, um, I have a list of those who are going to be there this Saturday, I just wanted to list off a few, just so you're aware of that. Um, the Committee of Council of Idaho will be there. Um, the Family Crisis Center will also be there as well. Uh, we do have the Center for Hope in Rexburg and the Alzheimer's Association. Those are just a few that will be attending. Um, if you know of anybody who can be there for that or would like to know more about our clinic and also other free services here in Rexburg, uh, please pass that along to them, uh, give them the information, and that would be wonderful.
Okay, thank you very much, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. All right, uh, next item on the agenda is item number five. This is a time for public comment, and, uh, public comment is, if there are things on the, uh, that are not on the agenda this evening that, uh, anyone would like to make us aware of, we invite you to come up to the podium and state your name and address and, uh, uh, let us know what you might be concerned about. Is there anyone that would like to make a comment at this time? Anyone? Anyone? Okay. Then if not, is there anyone online? No? Okay. All right, well, we'll move on then to item number six, which is a public hearing. Uh, this is to hear public comment on the proposed commercial property assessed capital expenditure program as outlined in Resolution Number 2024-14. Um, Matt, this has got you on there. Do you want to talk about this, or?
Yeah, I can just briefly talk about it.
Okay.
So, this is something that, uh, that we brought up in a prior resolution, I think about two meetings ago, if I remember right. And basically, you guys passed a resolution to set a public hearing, and that's tonight, that public hearing would happen tonight. And, uh, I'll just give a brief summary, but basically, CPACE is allowed by state statute, but in order for cities to be a part of it, we have to have a public hearing and pass a resolution. And then a private developer can go out and potentially get a lower interest loan through this program, and so that's, that's the advantage that, that we see as a city in endorsing and allowing this program to occur in our city. And, um, what it basically does is, uh, whoever gives that loan, uh, they are able, the city is able to record a lien, and then they are able to subordinate against the primary lien holder, and the primary lien holder knows that, and they have to agree to that. And so, we just basically see this as a potential economic tool in our city, and so we, we believe it wise to, to pass it and then allow for it to potentially occur, so.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from council about this program? We, we spent quite a bit of time online with, uh, a company that actually does these loans for develop, for developers, and, uh, one of our questions was, well, why do you need the city, really? And basically, the reason they need us is for, to be able to do as Matt said, in order for them to be able to, uh, give a, uh, the financing company give a lower, uh, a lower rate for financing, they can move their priority on their, uh, mortgage up in front of the, in front of the other, the other people, but as Matt said, they, they have to get permission to do that. But it sounds like they don't have too much trouble with that permission because they're pretty solid loans. These loans are all pretty solid, and so, um, so most of them have felt good about doing that. So, so we feel like it's a good, uh, economic development tool, and right now, one of the things we're hearing is, uh, because of financing costs, a lot of the, uh, development, uh, that people are wanting to do is, is unaffordable because of the, uh, high financing costs, and so this, this will help with that. So, if there are no other questions about it, um, we'll go ahead with the public hearing. And the way a public hearing works is it's exactly what that, what it says, we're here to, to hear from the public. If anyone is, uh, in favor of this proposal and would like to speak in, in favor of it, uh, we'll have a, a moment when you can come up to the, to the microphone and state your name and address and speak in favor. If you're neutral on it, uh, you can testify, uh, in the neutral position. Uh, if you're against the proposal, you can come up and testify, uh, against the proposal. So, that's how it works, and we'll have a little bit of time for each of those. So, at this point in time, we will open the public hearing, declare the public hearing open, and we will take any testimony in favor of this item at this time. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of it? Okay, seeing none, is there anyone that would like to speak in the neutral position for this item?
Um, Shelby Dupont, she's with the company that presented this, uh, program to us. She is online. Shelby, did you want to? I know she, she told me she wanted to, to testify tonight, so.
Hi, thank you. Thanks, council. Shelby Dupont from New England Capital. I'm here to testify in support of this program. Uh, New England Capital is the nation's leading capital provider for commercial property assessed clean energy, or CPACE. We're working with clients in the city of Rexburg who'd be eligible for this program and are ready to apply immediately. Right now, we're anticipating over $12 million in investment through this program by the end of the year. If this program were established, CPACE drives private capital investment for public benefit at zero cost to taxpayers. And to date, across the country, CPACE has seen over $8 billion in private investment. CPACE is an extremely unique financing mechanism. It uses existing legal structures for special assessments, which provide public benefits, but instead of using, utilizing public funds, CPACE uses all private funds and therefore places all risk on the private sector. Uh, CPACE capital providers employ thorough underwriting standards, but in addition, the Idaho Legislature put safeguards in the CPACE law, which was passed this year. The city of Coeur d'Alene passed a CPACE law just last night. Um, by establishing this CPACE program, we hope that Rexburg will be able to offer property owners the ability to obtain a lower cost of capital for their commercial properties and lower their operational energy costs throughout the lifecycle of their buildings, passing these savings onto their businesses. By unlocking this financing for commercial properties, CPACE programs improve the local tax base and incentivize developments to exceed building codes, leading to long-lasting and resilient building stock. New England Capital expresses full support for this program, and we're ready to work with commercial, agricultural, and industrial property owners across the city of Rexburg to finance their eligible projects. Thank you, council.
Okay, thank you very much, we appreciate that. So that was, that was a testimony in favor. Um, so at this point, is there any other testimony in favor? Jumped again a little bit there. Okay, uh, if there is no other testimony in favor, we'll move to testimony in the neutral position. Is there anyone that would like to testify in the neutral position? Okay. Hearing none, is there anyone who would like to testify against this proposal? Come on, all you high school debaters, let's, let's hear some, some against debate, just for fun. No, just kidding. All right, then, hearing none, we will, we will close, we will declare this public hearing closed, and at this time, uh, we will move then to item number seven, which is Resolution Number 2024-15.
Need a motion on that? Council motion, or?
Um, let's see, I don't know that, is there, the motion would be for the next item, right? Because there's, there's really no motion for the public hearing, right? Yeah, yeah, so, uh, so the motion would be on Resolution Number 2024-15 to adopt...
14, Tab?
15. Yeah. To adopt the commercial property assessed capital expenditure, the CPACE program, and set its terms in motion of acceptance from public hearing, oh, if the public hearing passes, okay. Okay, so I would entertain a motion to, uh, move forward on Resolution 2024-15.
One quick question.
So there's, there's no liability to the city?
Well, let's, let's have the motion, and then we have time for questions after the second, okay?
Okay.
That, that's how parliamentary procedure works. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a second.
I was going to make the motion. I didn't know.
Had a motion on the floor yet, didn't we?
No, I was going to make it, I didn't yet.
Oh, she was going to make it, yeah.
Yeah.
And so, so the motion by councilmember?
Yes.
Yeah, Fran, a second by councilmember Chambers. Now, is there any discussion or questions about the motion?
Yes, is there no liability to the city, this program, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, no liability, and then there is obviously some administrative cost involved. We, we can charge a fee, I don't remember if it's $500 or $600. Was it $500? So that was our thought, was we would just charge $500 because there is an application process that the, they have to go through, so.
Mr. Mayor, did I understand from the testimony that was given by the lady online that there's 12 million in investment anticipated? Was that here in Rexburg?
That's what she said, yes.
By the end?
Well, sir, there's a, they have a, they are currently working with a developer that has, that is looking to borrow $12 million through this program.
And I will add to that, that I've mentioned it to a couple of other developers that were looking at approving this, and they've been very interested in it too, so I wouldn't be surprised if it's quite a bit more than 12 million that might happen. Well, maybe not before the end of the year, but within the next year, so. Any further questions or comments? Okay, if none, then, then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, that motion passes. We will move on to item number eight, which is our staff reports. The first report is the finance report with Mr., our CFO, Mr. Matt Nielsen.
Okay, so tonight, I just have, uh, a couple of budget adjustments. So this first one is, is pretty quick, but, uh, we received a grant, a thriving communities grant for about $90,000, and this is to do a feasibility study for the potential river crossing at Fifth West. And so, so we actually received some of the dollars in fiscal year '24, so this budget adjustment would just allow us to then expend those dollars in this fiscal year. Do you want, want me to hit them both, or do you want to pass one at a time?
Uh, let's go ahead and, and move forward on this one. Um, so item number two, which, that would be the budget adjustment, uh, I'd entertain a motion to move forward with that budget adjustment.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I second.
Second by councilmember E., sir. Any questions or discussion about the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll go ahead with that budget adjustment. Now, item number one is the approval of the budget adjustment for savings on health insurance, dental, and other benefit renewals for the upcoming year, 2025.
Yeah, so this one, this one's a bit of good news, in my opinion, and so, um, when we were, last year, when we went on our new health plan, uh, they basically said there would be a rate cap of 12% when we renewed the following year, so that'd be 2025. And, uh, the great news is, is that our experience was really good through the last eight months or so. I think they've got about eight months of experience they're looking at, and we were actually able to negotiate a 0% increase on the health insurance, which, when you think about 12%, you know, that's, that's a plan that's cost over $3 million, and so it, it adds up pretty fast. And then, we did have a, a rate increase on the dental, and so that came in, and, uh, you know, that increase is about $12,000, and that would be split between the city and the employees. The employees pay 15%, the employer pays about 85%. And so, to give you some perspective on that, um, we're basically, if we adopt the same benefits, really, in '25 as we have currently in '24, the increased cost to a family will be about 20 bucks a year. So, so pretty amazing for the employees and obviously pretty great for the city as well. So what I've done is I've went in and basically backed off, uh, I've netted those two, and then backed off out of the benefits budget line item in the respective departments and funds, and then the idea would be to put that back into contingency, so that in order to spend that, we would have to come back to you guys and, and have approval to spend it on something else. Um, and then the other thing that's good is, you know, the, the return on investments for Percy have been really good over the last 12 to 18 months. And so, we took a rate increase in July of '24, and then they had another one scheduled for July of '25, and they are telling us they will likely, very likely defer that, and so, so there'll be some additional savings there for both the employer and the employee. And then, just for your information, as we look at, um, cost of living adjustments, uh, we just put the one in place in October for 3.33%. And then, as I've looked at that, we go January to January on the Consumer Price Index, and so far, um, for what they've released to this point, it's continued to trend down, and it's, it's right around 2% right now. And if, if the trend continues, I would suspect it would be in the high 1, 1.8 to 2% roughly. And so, so then, I guess what we're looking for is your approval to back this out and put these into contingency, so.
All right, anybody opposed to saving money? I would entertain a motion to approve this budget adjustment.
Okay, I will make a motion that we approve this budget adjustment as outlined.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I second.
Second by councilmember E., sir. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Matt on finance scene? Okay, thank you. Item B, 8B, is our Public Works Report with, uh, our Public Works Director Keith Davidson. Item number one is to surplus some recreation department ice skate sharpener valued at approximately $500. The display cases from the Rex, from the Museum of Rexburg, uh, to make them a donation to this Sugar City for their museum, so. Any details on that?
Yeah, so we're just looking for approval. Obviously, we've surplus the ice skates, so we have no longer a need for a sharpener, so we'd like to surplus that, and then also, like the mayor said, is, um, we have those display cases that we'd like to just give to Sugar City where they're setting up a museum.
Okay, um, so one of the things that we mentioned was, uh, with the money that we would receive from selling the skates, as well as the sharpener, that we could buy a new, uh, one of those burleys for the cross country, and I talked to Parker about that, and I think he, he was going to order one right away. And I talked to Parker about that, and I think he was gonna order one right away. That way, we'll have three. And that way, he said, well, how about if we order one, and then we'll see how busy they get. If we feel like we need another one, we can order another one. He said it only takes a couple of weeks to get them, so. At about $1,000, $1,100, $1,200... What did he say, $1,200 or something like that, a piece? So, I thought that'd be a good idea to order one and see how busy they stay, and then we'll go from there. Does that sound good? Okay. All right, then, at this time, I would entertain a motion for this surplus sale items. Is there such a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we move forward with the surplus of the ice sharpener, ice skate sharpener and the display cases.
All right, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Chambers. Any further discussion or questions? Yes.
I have a question. So we know for sure we're not gonna ever need those display cases again if we get a museum?
I think there's only certain ones that we're gonna surplus, right?
I don't think we're surplusing... We're not surplusing them all.
Yeah, Alicia... Alicia's here? I think I saw her.
We will be needing some?
We will be surplusing them all.
Oh, surplusing them all, I guess.
We're giving some of them to Sugar City.
Oh, just some of them go into Sugar City, and then the rest we're surplusing, so we won't have a need for them. A lot of three.
Okay.
And that's enough then? I mean, I guess I thought the goal was to have some things displayed in a different place. Is that not accurate?
Yes, eventually, we're working with, you know, the county and looking at some different options to try to figure out, you know, where and how and everything to do that. But I think, I think to your point, it probably is prudent to look at what we think we might need and, you know, hang on to them, or if there's some that we think we'll need in the future. And I think you're already doing that, right? Yeah. Okay. So.
So then, are we... So then I'm confused then, so we're surplusing only the ones that we know that we won't need? Could we hear what she has to say?
Yeah, come on.
So what we're doing is, we have about 10 cases. And out of those cases, a lot of them are mismatched, or they're not... They're older, and they're harder for us to access because of the way that they have to do it. And so, with Sugar City needing cases for their museum, and where these were actually part of the historical society, we want to gift those to them, and then keep the ones that we know we'll use that are nicer and smaller for our rotating exhibits that we want to do. And then in the future, once we get another location, then we can purchase newer, more updated cases that actually are better. A lot of these cases, the backs don't work right, or there's broken glass, or things like that. And so, these are just older cases. But yes, that is something we considered when we finally do get another location.
So some of the cases that are artifacts themselves, kind of?
There are... A lot of them are from older shops, and so those ones Sugar City didn't necessarily want. And so, those are the ones that we'll have to figure out what to surplus in a different way, so. That one right there, actually, is one of the older ones that they don't want. It doesn't close on the back, and the glass got broke on the end when we had to move it.
And I would imagine storage is gonna be a problem, because we're having difficulty finding storage artifacts.
And they're really big. So they're... And so they're really bulky, that's the other thing, so.
Okay. All right, does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, is there any further questions, comments? Okay, hearing none, I would entertain a mo... Let's see, did we already have the motion, right? No, I'd entertain a motion... Oh, you did the motion.
Oh, brother.
We did the motion, yes.
You did the motion, and who seconded it? Did we have a second?
I did.
Councilmember Chambers seconded it, okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will go ahead with the surplus on those items. Right, item number B2 is Resolution 2024-16, where the Idaho Transportation Department grant agreement for safety improvements on North Second East. Okay. Keith, yes?
Yeah, so on this one, this is just north of where Second East and Yellowstone split off. They were going up to Sugar City. And so, we put in for a lighting and widening project of that road. And so, ITD gave us a grant for that, and so that's what we're looking at, is to accept that. It's a $2 million grant, which were... We'd be a 7.34% match on that, so about $146,000. So we're seeking council approval to accept that grant.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. Is there a motion to move forward with this resolution?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we move forward and approve Resolution Number 2024-15.
Or 16?
Oh, 16, excuse me.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Chambers. Okay, thank you. Any further discussion or questions about this item? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will accept that grant and move forward with that project. Item number three, acceptance for a grant agreement under fiscal year 2024 Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant Program.
Okay, so this one is basically, creates a safety action plan. And so, on a lot of federal grants, we need to have a safety action plan for our community in order to apply for them. And so, we were able to receive a grant for $240,000 to put together this safety action plan for Rexburg. And we do have a $60,000 match on that, but we can do most of that work in kind.
In kind match, okay. All right. Okay. Is there a motion to accept this grant?
I will so move, we accept this grant.
All right, thank you, is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Councilmember Reeser. Any discussion or questions about this grant item?
No question. So will we see the action, or the plan that you put together, or...
Yeah, we'll bring it before council, that way you guys can see it. And we'll have to go out and get a consultant to go through and put that together. But yeah, at the end of it, we'll bring it forth to council.
What's the approximate timeframe on doing that?
What we'd like to do, once we get the grant, which is, we'd have to go out on an RFP or RFQ, get a consultant on board, and then we'll have a timeframe. When we get that, obviously, we'll bring that to council with that consultant that we've selected. So I don't have a specific timeframe, but it would be working through. I imagine we'll have to work through the summer months with that, so that way they can see Rexburg.
Oh, through the...
Now, snow-covered.
Okay.
On all of our sidewalks.
All right. So basically, through the summer, probably, approximately. Okay, thank you. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will go ahead and accept that grant money and move forward with that study. All right, item number nine, on the agenda is 9A, is to ratify Carly Francis as a member of the Parks, Recreation, and Trails Committee. And I visited with her, and she expressed a willingness to serve on that committee. And so, if there's no discussion or objection, I would entertain a motion to ratify Mrs. Francis to that committee.
I can make that motion, that we ratify Carly Francis to the Parks, Rec, and Trails Committee.
Thank you, is there a second to that motion?
I will second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Chambers. Any further discussion or questions about this item? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, all right, we will go ahead and notify her that she has been ratified. All right, item number 10. 10A is approval for new off-premise beer and wine licenses, or license number 4385 for the Good-to-Go Gas and Convenience Store located at 1055 South 12th West. That's a fairly standard thing. Is there any comments or questions about that before we move forward? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to move forward with this item. Is there such a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the beer and wine license for Good-to-Go Gas between the stores.
Okay, thank you, is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Councilmember Reeser. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, item number B. Planning and zoning recommendation to approve a zone change from Light Industrial to Low Density Residential III at approximately 119 West Second North. This will be designated as ordinance number 1324 if the motion passes. Mr. Parkinson, would you like to tell us a little bit about this item?
Sure, thank you, Mayor, council members. This property is located on Second North, basically just across the road from the new hockey rink that's going in. It was formerly known as Arnold's Printing at some stage. Guys that have purchased it at this point are looking at a way to try to repurpose the building. It's very difficult in a light industrial to do anything that way, so they're asking to switch this to LDR III to be able to put it into some type of housing that they can then provide. And so, P&amp;Z has recommended it to you for approval. Any questions that you would have on this?
Any questions for Alan?
Alan, the railroad right-of-way issue, the railroad has opposed this.
Right.
Is there a reason that they would have opposed this?
I'm assuming that it's just a standard deal they're going to do to let the landowner know that right-of-way is there, they can't encroach upon it, which we wouldn't allow them to encroach upon it anyways without railroad permission. So everything they do, we'll have to take that into consideration.
So those two parallel lines, is that the right-of-way?
Yes. You see the track through, and the property goes across that track. That spur is not an actively used one, most of it's been dismantled. But they want to reserve the right, if they choose to put that back in, that it would be accessible.
Okay.
Can I have...
Yes, go ahead.
And so, I know in the letter it said something about how the city or the property owner would incur any expenses, but we don't foresee any expenses.
Only if we did something to encroach on that right-of-way.
And did I read in the report also that the buildings to the east of that, those are housing as well?
Yeah, there's a home just straight east of it. And to the south of it is the new Summit Builders is putting in that 40-unit apartment complex. And they're both HDR I. So we're actually coming in with a little bit lower. But the size of the lot makes it so there's very little you can do with it. And the LDR III is there because of the size of the lot. It has to be that small for them to develop and do what they need to do. Because if you go to LDR I or II, you don't have enough lot cut for that to happen. So.
Okay. All right, good. All right, I would entertain a motion at this time to move forward with ordinance number 1324.
I will make that motion, that we approve ordinance number 1324.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. Seconded by Councilmember Johnson. Any further questions or discussion on this zone change? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, motion passes, we will go ahead with that zone change. And item number C is planning and zoning recommendation to approve a conditional use permit to allow a caretaker residence in a light industrial zone located at 145 West Second North. All right. Tell us a little bit about this item, Alan.
Yes, this one is just across the tracks and down a little bit to the south on the old Madison Co-op property. The original part of that, that was a fertilizer plant. They had an office located a little bit further to the south and west. The owners have asked to switch and change that into a caretaker cottage for somebody to live on site, which is allowed with the CUP under our current LI code, our zone.
So they... A light industrial zone, okay. All right. Any further questions for Mr. Parkinson on this item?
This one also had a letter from the railroad, but they're nowhere near the tracks on this one. The building is almost between them and the tracks anyways.
Oh, yeah.
Fertilizer plant, so.
Okay.
So Alan, either repurposing some office space, it sounds like, or that's what they want to do. I'm assuming with the, in the, with the building permit process, they'll be... They'll have to meet all the... They're gonna have to upgrade everything, because those are old buildings.
Yeah, they'll have to meet current building code to switch that where they need to go.
Okay.
So this is just to get the permission to move forward, and then they will have to apply for the permit and everything to meet those requirements. Or inspections, depending on how the building's set up.
Okay. All right, if there are no more questions for Mr. Parkinson, I would entertain a motion to move forward with this conditional use permit. Is there such a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I will move that we approve the conditional use permit allowing a caretaker residence in Light Industrial.
Okay, thank you, is there a second to that motion?
I second.
Seconded by Councilmember Reeser. Any further discussion or questions on this item? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, motion passes, we will go ahead with that conditional use permit. And get them going. Okay, item number 11. Thank you, Mr. Parkinson, appreciate that. Item number 11A is a second reading. Just to explain to all of you who may not have been here before and are not familiar with our processes, for each, those three items that we just approved are considered first readings. So we read them once, we discuss them, we vote on them. And then in the next meeting, they become on the calendar as a second reading. So government is kind of designed to move rather slowly, just so that there's time for people to, for the public to weigh in on things and, you know, to have a very transparent process. And so, we do a second reading, in which time, if any of the council members have questions or comments about something that we've already passed, that could be re-discussed and revoted on if they so desire. Most of the time, they're discussed at length, and we don't do much with these. We just consider them second red. And in the meeting after that, we do the same thing again and consider them third red. And once they pass the third reading, then they become law. So that's what these second readings and third readings are all about. So item number 11A is a second reading of ordinance number 1322, which was the annexation of approximately 360 stationary road into the city of Rexburg. And if there are no questions or comments about that, I would entertain a motion to consider ordinance 1322 second red.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we consider ordinance 1322 second red.
Thank you, is there any... Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Eric Erickson. Oh, wait, was it... Was that you, Chamber... Oh, sorry, Councilmember Chambers. You're all starting to sound alike to me. Okay. Guess I need my new hearing aids. Okay. Any further discussion on that motion? There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, ordinance number 1322 is second, considered second red. Item number two is ordinance number 1323, which is a rezone at approximately 222 West Second North from Low Density Residential II to Low Density Residential III. Is there... I would entertain a motion to consider that ordinance second red.
I will make a motion that we consider ordinance 1323 second red.
Thank you, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Councilmember Eric Erickson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, ordinance 1323 is second red. Item B, third readings, we have ordinance number 1321 is a rezone with conditions to build no more than 12 units total between both lots at 312 and 316 Grand Loop from Community Business Center to Medium Density Residential I. Is there a... I would entertain a motion to consider ordinance 1321 third red.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we consider ordinance number 1321 third red.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Councilmember Eric Erickson. Any further discussion or questions on that, on this third reading? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Still no.
What?
Still no.
Oh, still no, okay, thank you. All right, that motion passes. We will consider ordinance 1321 third read. Okay, item 12 is the consent calendar. The consent calendar are typical routine items, typically not of great controversy. Before we move forward, are there any specific questions about any of these items before we move forward on the consent calendar?
Mariana had a question about, Councilmember Erickson had recused himself or whatever from that, that last one. She wondered if he still wanted to.
Oh.
Yeah.
On, on item B1, okay.
At this point, no.
Okay, you're good. He's good. Okay. All right, thank you, then. We will move forward.
We haven't left people to vote on that, then?
Well, he said, he said no. He didn't recuse himself.
I will not recuse myself.
Oh, you will not recuse yourself. Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we're, so we're good. Yeah, which is good, because there's only four.
Yeah, I was gonna say that, messes things up.
Yeah. All right, item 12 is our consent calendar, which consists of the minutes from the October 16, 2024 meeting, and the approval of the, of paying the city of Rexburg bills. I would entertain a motion at this time to approve the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Johnson. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will enter the minutes and pay the bills. All right, item number 13 is we need to move into an executive session as per Idaho Stat, State Statute 74-2061C to acquire an interest in real property not owned by a public agency. To move into an executive session requires a, a voice vote, but actually, I need a motion first. So is there a motion to move into executive session?
I will make a motion that we move into executive session.
All right, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Chambers. Mariana, would you do a voice, a voice vote for us, please, on this item?
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember E. Erickson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reese.
Yes.
All right, thank you. We will move into executive session, which means that we have to ask everyone to vacate the premises, because this is a, a private matter. And so, we will come back into session after the meeting to adjourn, but that's all we will be doing, so it's not too exciting. Yes, Council, Councilor Zollinger, do you, did you have an item?
Yeah, just rather than make them leave in a real hurry, that Councilmember Erickson had asked that you move this to the front conference room, so he can zoom in and have access.
Okay, yeah, that, that was, that was the plan, actually, so...
But you're still, the meeting's over, and you can leave without Reese knowing that you went out.
Item for consideration. I think, I thought we were gonna talk about that.
While I got your chair, I need your signature. Will we physically come back here?
We've got item number 14. Are we gonna do that in executive session, or does that need to be?
We'll do it afterwards.
Afterwards? Oh, we'll need to do it afterwards, because that's what we're talking about. Uh, okay.
That's just for that CUP.
Thank you, students for coming. We appreciate you.